Meeting to order. This is the Board of County Commissioners Workshop Meeting of April 26, 2022. May I please have a roll call?
Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
Commissioner Kerner.
Here.
Commissioner Moreno.
Here.
Commissioner McKinley.
Good morning.
Commissioner Sax.
Mayor Weinroth.
I am here.
Vice Mayor Weiss.
Here.
Vice Weiss, would you please do the invocation and pledge? Everybody please stand.
Before we begin our business at hand, let us ask the divine for guidance as we make decisions to help improve our communities. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Short and sweet. Okay, do we have any additions, deletions, or substitutions, Madam Administrator?
We have one on page 2, 4A2, where we have a revised motion deleting the December 15, 2021 zoning type meeting.
Very good. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? I have a motion by Commissioner Kerner, seconded by the Vice Mayor. All in favor, all opposed. Show that is approved unanimously, seven to zero. All right, we're going to move on to our public hearings this morning. I'm going to ask, do we have a motion to receive and file? I have a motion to receive and file by Vice Mayor Weiss, seconded by Commissioner Kerner. All in favor, all opposed. That has been approved, seven to zero. Okay, county attorney, we have a public hearing.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Good morning.
Push your little button so we can hear you.
Good morning, Liz Harmon for County Attorney's Office. We are here. Staff recommends a motion to adopt an ordinance repealing County Code, Chapter 18, Article 1, Section 18-7, called the Palm Beach County Solicitation and Distribution of Public Roads Ordinance.
And this is because we have been told by our friends up north, we can't do this anymore.
Yes, there has been some recent First Amendment case law where courts have found that regulations similar to our ordinance are unconstitutional, and so we recommend repealing it in its entirety.
Thank you. Commissioner Kerner, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. And I see Commissioner McKinley wants to speak, but I'll offer a motion on 3A1, for a motion to adopt an ordinance repealing.
Mr. Mayor, I'll second it, since I never voted in favor of it in the first place.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Kerner, a second by Commissioner McKinley. Do we, we do have a public comment, you said, Commissioner?
No, Mayor.
No, okay, very good. Seeing no public comment and seeing no further discussion on the dais, all in favor, all opposed, show that that has now been approved. 3A1 is approved, seven to zero. Thank you very much for bringing that forward. All right, we are now done with our public hearings. It's now time to move on to our regular agenda. Our clerk in controller has asked us to approve several items, including the revised motion, which was 4A2. Can I have a motion to approve 4A1, 2, 3, and 4? I have a motion by Commissioner Sax, seconded by Commissioner Kerner. All in favor, all opposed, show that has been approved, seven to zero. And I believe that takes care of our regular agenda, brings us to workshop. I'm going to announce now, I don't think it's going to be any problem, but we will break for lunch today at noon, but I don't think that our calendar is going to be so lengthy that we'll have a problem making that break. We do have a 2:00 and a 3:00 on our agenda as well. It's time for our 9:30. Come on up, Dorit, and tell us about the action plan for HED.
Good morning, Mayor.
Yes, I'm on. Good morning to the board and Administrator Baker. Today, we are continuing the conversation on housing. That has been the hottest topic for discussion. So we will be presenting to you the action plan for fiscal year 2022, the 2023. At the table this morning is Jonathan Brown, who is the Director of Housing and Economic Development, the Deputy Director Sheri Howard, and we have Carlos Serrano. Carlos is the Planning Director for all things housing. So that is the team this morning. So what is the action plan? The action plan is a federal requirement, okay, and that is a condition of receiving federal dollars for housing from the Housing and Urban Development, and that is referred to commonly as HUD. So this is consistent with federal regulations, and also as a requirement or prerequisite to this is the adoption of a five-year consolidated plan. The five-year consolidated plan, you know, is basically like a strategic plan for housing, and Jonathan will go into greater detail with that. And so the action plan is specific by each year, depending on the funding allocation, and it must be consistent with the strategies in the consolidated plan. So I'm going to hand it over to Jonathan now to continue the presentation.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Administrator Baker. Thank you so much for having us here today to present our annual action plan. And so today, we're going to start with just an overview. We'll talk about our stakeholders, the priority needs, our 2022, 2023 resources, funding strategies, and next steps. Basically, what we're going to be asking for is your recommendation or your support of what you will see in this action plan, and then we will develop that draft that we will work with the community on, the public on, bring back input on that. And so as Dorit shared, the action plan is really a one-year window within our five-year consolidated plan. The consolidated plan was approved by the board in July of 2020, and it covers the grant years 2020 through 2024. Within the consolidated plan, there were some things that we had identified, priorities in terms of the funding for housing, community, and economic development. And then that brings us today to the action plan. The action plan will identify the funding allocations and proposed uses of fundings for the 2022, 2023 year. Please note that as we go through this, and ultimately when you see the documents, as with HUD, as with the state, they're templates, they're form documents, and sometimes it's HUD speak, but we try to make sure that we convey and share as best as we can what HUD means by some of the terminology. And so, as you know, with our consolidated plan, there are three funding sources. There is community development block grant, there is our home funding, and then there is our emergency solutions grants. And we'll talk a little bit more about each as we move forward. Now, the action planning process is a pretty extensive process. There is a lot of stakeholder input that we work and we secure through the community. You'll see within the plan, once it's drafted, the funding strategies, and then ultimately the plan development phase where we'll bring that draft back. That draft will have public input, will seek BCC approval, and then we'll get it submitted to HUD. The action plan ultimately becomes our application to HUD for funding. Stakeholders that are typically involved in our process, a slew of them, from the residents to our municipal partners, our county departments, our cross-development teams, and many more, are all a part of this process in preparing an action plan. So let's start with community development block grant. Most of you know it as CDBG. CDBG, the purpose is to provide a suitable living environment and economic opportunities, primarily for the low and moderate income persons. And that becomes a little different, because with HUD, it's 80% and below, and so different funding sources may have a different definition for low and mod. For a household of four, that's approximately 68,500. Under CDBG, the eligible activities includes our public facilities, infrastructure, public services, our economic development, and our housing activities. Home is another funding source that we have. Home is used to provide decent, affordable housing to low and moderate incomes. Again, the AMI is the same. Eligible activities includes housing development, which includes our new construction, homebuyer assistance, acquisition and rehabilitation, tenant-based rental assistance, and our community housing development organizations, and we'll talk a little bit more about each of those momentarily. And then the third funding source that we prepare as part of our action plan is our emergency solutions grant. This particular program provides housing and supportive services to the homeless and the at-risk population. The AMI for this particular program is 30% and below. Under this particular program, the eligible activities includes our emergency shelter, our homeless prevention, the rapid rehousing efforts, transitional housing, and our client management information system. And so typically, when we bring the action plan to you, at least the draft, we bring it around this time of year. Oftentimes, we don't know what that final funding amount is. Typically, within the next 30 days or so, we'll find out from HUD. So what we're sharing with you now is what we've received in 2021, 2022, and then the 2022, 2023, we expect to receive from HUD, again, within the next 30 days or so. Within our CDBG program, for purposes of developing this draft plan, we are using the funding allocations as approved by the commissioners for the current year that we're in. So for instance, our countywide public services, right now, we're reflecting the amount that was received for this current year. Those amounts will shift and change once we receive the final allocation. With a lot of the categories, we're pretty much set in terms of maximum percentages and dollars we can use for the categories, and you'll see more about that coming up. So you'll see on this slide, when we get into our public service activities, using community development block grant. HUD does not allow municipalities to use more than 15% of their CDBG toward public service activities. For the county, 75% of our block, or our public service dollars are used toward our homeless facilities. 25% of those dollars are used to support private nonprofit agencies that are providing public service activities for the county. And those agencies are, for example, those agencies, AIDS to victims of domestic abuse, Children's Place at Home Safe, and many, many more. And those are the agencies, again, that provide public service activities for the county throughout the county. Additionally, as part of our CDBG program, economic development is a key tool. There are agencies that the commission has funded in the past, and we're bringing those agencies back to the commission. The Center for Enterprise Opportunity, the Center for Technology, Enterprise, and Development, the Black Business Investment Corporation, and then the Economic Development Services provided through the department. As part of this, as most of you all remember, we have a formula that we use to provide assistance or funding to municipalities, specifically 10 municipalities that have CDBG target areas. Now, the way we provide those dollars, or the way we propose those dollars, is that we use the same formula that HUD uses to determine how much the county is going to receive. So we make those recommendations based on population, poverty, and housing overcrowding. This is the current year's allocation, and you get a chance to kind of see where most of those dollars are going in terms of what municipality, and then each municipality will provide to us their proposed project. We ensure that the project meets the CDBG requirements, and then we move forward with the agreement, giving them an opportunity to perform whatever project they have identified. The special area of hope, back in 2001, 2002, the special area of hope started with the Glades Communities. Back in 2013, 2014, the county commissioner said, well, we need to expand that and make sure that each of the municipalities that have target areas that are eligible to receive dollars from the county, they have an opportunity to receive that special area of hope. It's really a one-time, you know, injection for projects that they have. When you take a look at the amount of funding that are provided to them, some of them have projects that need a little bit more. This upcoming year, the special area of hope would be provided to the city of Belglade. Again, we're approximating the amount, and those dollars would go toward recreational improvements at the airport park. County capital projects, every year, as we are starting the annual action planning process, we will work with our county departments to identify CDBG eligible projects that they may have that they would like to present to the county commission for support and funding. This year, the three projects we have, Duncan Paget Park, Glades Pioneer Park, and Penn Park Roadway Resurfacing. And then we shift over to our home program. Again, home is used for affordable housing for rental and for sale units. We implement this program by providing direct assistance, whether it is to an individual that's looking to purchase, an individual who needs housing rehabilitation, or a developer through competitive processes. New construction, acquisition, rehabilitation are all eligible under the home program, and we're estimating, this current year, it's about 2.4 million. I estimate that the funding will probably be around the same. We'll see, because there've been a lot of stimulus dollars that the federal government has provided. With our rental housing development, we start with the million dollars we're recommending. As you may recall, typically with the rental housing development through the home program, we use those dollars to match the 9% tax credit, and oftentimes, a 4% tax credit. And so we estimate, you know, this past year was around 700,000, not sure what it's going to be, but we want to make sure that we have enough to support a 9% tax credit project as it is presented, once the process from the state has been outlined. We're also proposing approximately 693 million be set aside for homebuyer assistance. We're looking at approximately 483,000 for our CHODO activities. CHODO stands for Community Housing Development Organization. Those are organizations that meet HUD's special requirement in terms of how the organization is made up, in terms of their board, who's on their board, and the target areas that they serve. HUD requires that we set aside a certain amount of dollars for our CHODOs, and then we have our program administration. So just to kind of give you an idea as it relates to our CHODOs, CHODOs that we currently have certified and that we're working with now include Habitat Solutions, Riviera of Beach, Community Redevelopment Agency, and the Community Land Trust of Palm Beach County. And then our last, the third and last HUD-funded program through the annual action plan is the Emergency Solutions Grant. We're estimating about 570,000. This program is administered by our Community Services Department. We are pretty much a pass-through for this particular program. Community Services is working on their award process now. They have identified their priorities, which includes emergency shelter for single males, rapid rehousing for homeless families. They're expecting the subcommittee to meet around May 20, and then we will bring back those recommendations as part of the final annual action plan to the county commission on July 12. And the next steps for us as staff is to take your direction and prepare a draft plan that we can now begin to secure public input and comments on. We'll publish that draft, we'll have some public meetings, so we can share information about the plan and receive those comments. Bring that final draft back, or that draft back to the board on July 12, and then HUD requires that it be submitted by August 14 in order to meet the deadline. Now, this particular plan, as we talk about some of the funding that the county have in place to deal with existing type of housing needs, and so our HUD programs and our HUD funding supports the housing plan that we talk about from that perspective, making sure that we're still providing purchase assistance, that we're still providing rehabilitation. You see also even through the home program, we provide opportunities for new construction, and then we're addressing our homelessness and our very, very low and our extremely low population with our emergency solutions grant. And additionally, even through CDBG with our public facilities and our infrastructure projects, we're providing that necessary support that will help us to continue to provide not just the housing, but all of the things that are necessary around housing to build what we like to call balanced communities.
And just to add to what Jonathan said about the housing plans, as we continue to develop the housing plan, these strategies will be more clearly defined. And if we recall, when we had the discussion of the housing plan, we identified three main strategies, preservation of affordable and workforce units, which is rehabilitation, replacement housing, foreclosure prevention. The second one was capacity building, that is adding new units. And the third category was providing housing for the very low and low-income individuals. So as we develop the plan, what we'll do is look at all our various funding sources, this one, plus ship, all the dollars that we get from federal government, all the sources, and we will all, we will start tracking them and match it to the different categories. So that is the plan, and we're waiting for any direction.
Thank you very much. I know we'll have some comments, but my first comment or my first question is, how much of these funds are redundant with the numbers that we were talking about a couple of weeks ago, the $40 million that we're using as a, basically a stopgap or to prime the pump before we make a decision on the housing bond?
The funds serve similar AMIs and categories, but these specific dollars here, with the exception of home that targets new construction, these dollars here would do some of what Dorit talked about in terms of our preservation, whether it's rehab, foreclosure prevention, et cetera, and it will target our homeless population.
So when you had this exhibit, excuse me, 2.4 million dollars?
This would be, I'm sorry, this would be in addition to your 40.8 million dollars.
Addition to, this is not part of that.
It's not a part of it, okay, because these funds have not yet been, become available to us, but it is coming from HUD, because we're entitlement counties. So this is additional funds, as well as a ship fund as well. We discussed the L-HAP in the prior meeting. It's in the governor's budget for 10.3 million dollars. That would be additional.
Okay, very good. All right, Commissioner Bernard, you're first at bat.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to thank staff for presenting this to us, even though you don't have the final numbers for the fiscal year 2022 and 2023. Very happy to see that the, on the CDBG side, the special area of hope going to Belglade to assist in the airport park, I believe that that's a, you know, great project. And just, you know, in regards to the CDBG home and the ESG, I like the allocations and, you know, hope that we're able to get those funds, so now we can continue to adjust the housing needs of our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Moreno, you're next.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. On the CDBG grants on page 12, you have HUD allows up to 15%, and then you rolled in cities. My question is, I know that certain cities actually get their own CDBG grants, and I've said it a thousand times, I was in the city of Palm Beach Gardens, we have our own CDBG grants, but can you explain to me how a municipality gets it themselves? Because I know that you have other municipalities in here on following pages, so please explain the difference.
So there are seven entitlement cities, okay, Jonathan, and then we get our own that we have to share. So Jonathan will explain the formula.
Exactly. And so HUD, as they determine which municipalities are eligible within the county, including the county, they take a look at certain things. We talked about population, we talked about poverty, we talked about housing overcrowding. Once you, as a municipality, reaches a certain number of population, then it makes you eligible. That's why some of our municipalities, although we're providing them dollars, they're not eligible as of yet.
So like Lake Worth Beach, I know their population would be one where they would qualify for their own CDBG grants, but you have them on your list here.
I'm not sure.
So they're, Carlos, you know, the seven?
If Lake Worth would qualify, I'm not sure. One more time.
A population of 50,000 makes a municipality eligible to go directly to HUD for CDBG funding. I don't think Lake Worth Beach is quite there yet.
Okay.
I think there are seven, and they are, help me, Palm Beach Gardens, West Palm Beach, Wellington, Boynton, Jupiter.
Boca. Boca and Delray.
Okay. So they, they're out of the pot. They're out of the county pot.
Yeah, they're out of the county pot, and they are requiring to do their action plan, like what we're doing right now for their cities.
Okay.
Commissioner, would you yield to the administrator, please?
Sure.
I wanted to chime in and state that it is up to the cities, it's not automatic. They may want to stay under our umbrella, because that way we can leverage our dollars better if they are under our umbrella. So it's not an automatic when they reach the 50,000 in population, they may choose to stay under the county's umbrella.
Okay, perfect. All right, and then on page 15. You answered that, thank you. Page 19, when you talked about the rental housing development matching 9% tax credit, could you please, I have no idea what that means, so I'll be the first one to ask. Can you explain?
That's okay. Exactly. So each year, the state will provide opportunities for developers of rental housing to apply, competitively compete, I should say, for tax credit projects. Tax credit projects ultimately provides additional dollars that will offset the cost of a project and give the developer an opportunity to lower the rents, et cetera, that they're providing for a project. So for example, the county can provide a $700,000, $800,000 local match, which is required, and that developer could take that and leverage anywhere between 20, 25 million in tax credits. Again, allows them to offset the cost, lower the cost, I should say, and make that project more affordable. And when you're applying for tax credits, you are required to serve the lower AMIs, which is a benefit to most municipalities.
Thank you. And that will be my, all my questions. Thank you.
And if I may, we currently have open RFP for $2 million for, I think it's home, and also for rental and also for single family. So before long, that will be coming before the board.
Thank you. Commissioner McKinley.
Could we use any of the funding pots that we have that we were shown at our last workshop? Could we use any of those to create our own tax credit-type program?
We could use our dollars, I don't know if we could consider it a tax credit, but we could, we could use it to provide an incentive. I don't know if we could consider it a tax credit, because the way the tax credits are formulated, we don't use that process. Ours is more in the terms of a forgivable, I'm sorry, not even forgivable, a loan, a low-interest loan that's ultimately repaid to the county. So we can use it to provide subsidy, we can use it to provide incentives to assist housing units, maybe not a tax credit program per se.
Okay, just curious. My question on the, on the home investment partnerships description, the eligible activities. So I had a meeting yesterday with one of our local mayors, and we were talking about the issue of mobile, mobile homes, and this, there seems to be a trend, at least in his community, and I've noticed it out in my district as well from time to time, where it's difficult, these code enforcement violations get called in on these trailers, and it's the trailer owner usually is renting the lot from the mobile home park owner, and so the mobile home park owner can't really do anything because it's against the trailer. So he was telling me that he's starting to see this trend where the mobile home parks are calling in the violations, and we've got a lot of residents who are living in those that can't afford those repairs, and then they end up having to go elsewhere, and there's really nowhere else for them to go. And it's a, it's a mechanism, I think, that some of the landlords are using to push, push some of these tenants out. Is there a way under the acquisition rehabilitation program that, can we help a mobile homeowner? Are those only for bricks and mortar housing?
Carlos, I'll have you help me with that one. I know certain funding sources do not allow us to provide assistance to mobile homes, period. I'm not sure about the HUD programs.
I don't believe we can assist mobile homes with the home program dollars, but I believe we can with the state ship funding.
Okay, I'd really like us to explore creating a program just for those types of owners. of owners or tenants because there are no other options for a lot of those families right now. And, you know, I've, I've done ride-alongs with fire rescue and with PBSO in different areas across the county and those, some of those mobile homes, that's, that's their only choice. And I'd like to help them stay in that so that they don't end up on the streets. So if we could help create a program just targeted towards, towards those types of homeowners, that would be great. And then the last, I just, I'm kind of trying to be a little quiet down here and a little humbled seeing all of the great things for the Glades. And I just want to thank this board for their support over the years for recognizing the significant need. I know we've all got pockets of that in our districts. And I think that the best way to lift a community up is you've got to provide safe housing, you've got to provide good jobs, and then you've got to provide a safe alternative for kids to be rather than just on the street. And so those park improvements are so important, so just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Mayor Weiss.
Thank you. Thank you for the update. Couple of questions. Does the plan have any goals, results that we track against?
Wait, Carlos, sorry. Sure. Once we identify this with the board's direction, the specific activities that would be funded, there would be then numerical goals for each activity. If it was a housing related activity, there'd be numbers of housing units, say. If it was a infrastructure project, there would be goals associated with that particular type of activity.
So can, can I ask that you send where we're at today with our last year's goals?
Yes.
And if I may add, at the end of the year, we're required to do a K P R. And the K P R stands for?
Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report.
So that's an annual report that we prepare and we send that to HUD. And that is our accomplishments, so we can share that with you.
Okay. And then on the, on the academic, economic development side, do we have ROIs for those dollars?
We don't have a return on investment estimated, but we do track the number of the, some of the incubators are just purely technical assistance for startups or early stage companies. Some provide credit builder loans to help to lift them up and some provide other loans and apprenticeships and things like that. But we can take a look at it and see if there's a way that we can do that. And based on our CDTs, you asked for that as well, so we're working through those metrics right now. But they all have a scope of services and goals that they have to achieve and they all have slightly different scopes of services so that we can address each company at each stage of their life.
Right. I, I think, I think it's important that we, we can be able to, you know, discuss and share with the public, you know, how these, how these investments and what they're returning and the benefits that the community is, is obtaining from them. And then my last question is on the, on the tax credit projects and you, you know, we set aside a million dollars last year, a similar amount of money. My question is, how many units did we get?
The project.
And when are they coming?
Sure. The home funding last year, we put that out through a competitive RFP for the nine percent housing credits match. The funds were awarded to a project in the unincorporated area called Autumn Ridge. It's located within the Westgate CRA. The dollar amount we provided was eight hundred and fifteen thousand. I believe it's around a thirty-three million dollar project in total. About two thirds of that budget's coming from the tax credit equity. And I believe that'll result in about a hundred and ten housing units.
And HUD does have a formula of the amount that we need to provide depending on the project.
Okay. And do we know when those, those units will be online?
The, that project is, is actually ready to go. They're trying to fill in one small gap with construction costs increasing, there's a small gap and we're taking a look at it to see if we have the ability to, to do that so those projects can, can, can get underway.
Okay. And, and do we have similar information from the previous year?
Yes. During the previous year, the project to which we awarded the match was not successful at the state level. It's a competitive process at the state level and there will be multiple applications from projects located within the county, only one of those being funded. That prior year, the award went to the Berkeley Landing Project in Riviera Beach and we're actually participating in that project with some impact fee assistance.
So, so let me just then ask this question. Did, what happened to that fund, those funds then if, if we didn't, weren't able to utilize them on that project?
They're reprogrammed to other housing uses. They, they'll go back out via another RFP, perhaps not for the nine percent match, but generally for housing development.
So it's not required that it go for the nine percent match?
Correct.
Interesting. All right, thank you.
Notwithstanding this program and your projections of how you're going to spend the money, I think, I see this as a failure. And I think we've had this discussion before when we were talking about the housing bond and the inability to really make a real difference since two thousand nine. The number of units we put on the table has been minimal. We have a target of twenty-five hundred, we haven't even hit that number. I don't know what the numbers we've actually put into service, but I look at these numbers and I am struck by the fact that we're not making any progress. I'm struck by the fact that these numbers, we, we've pat ourselves on the back that we now have a living wage in this county. Thirty-one thousand, two hundred dollars is buying somebody nothing. You're already saying that a family of four making sixty-eight, five is already below eighty percent of AMI or at AMI of eighty percent. I, you know, we, we keep doing the same thing over and over again and we're surprised that we're not making any headway in this. And I'm not seeing any progress. And I'm, I'm really frustrated. I know we're going to have this conversation again because we're going to discuss the housing bond again. But I am frustrated that all of this money we're putting towards this is dealing with the, the end product of maybe lack of education, lack of job opportunities. People have found themselves in a situation where they now need help. The answer is ultimately that we have to get in the front of this and it really is an education issue. It's really is bringing the skill level up to people that they're able to have a wage that doesn't necessitate them looking to the government to help them out of their problem. I don't know what the answer is. I don't think the seven of us are going to come up with a solution to this. I know I was very excited about a presentation that was made at the B D B this week about a program at Roosevelt, the school in West Palm Beach, where they're going to put extra money into a program, they're calling it the possible, where they're going to basically create a magnet school there, a school that's really going downhill. It's in a death spiral. Kids are leaving that school and going other places and as they leave, less money goes to the school, they have less services and it just, it's just perpetuating. We need to do something earlier in the life cycle of our residents and not deal with it at this level where we're just putting a Band-Aid on it. And I don't have an answer today, but I'm, I'm frustrated that we're throwing this money at this and it's not changing anything. We're not making any improvements, we're helping a few people temporarily, not necessarily getting them off of the point where they're going to need help. So I don't see where this program is. The vice mayor said, what are the goals, what are the results? What are the goals? What are the results? Show me that you have made an improvement for our residents. I don't think you can do that yet. It's a stopgap solution. Tell me I'm wrong.
Well, Mayor, we can absolute, I'm sorry.
Mayor, I, I believe I can understand and appreciate your frustration because I am just as frustrated. However, we have, we don't have the solution. No one has it. This is a nationwide issue. Palm Beach County is the place that people want to be and some of our units that we used to have sixty to eighty thousand dollars, they're now three hundred thousand dollars. And so it is challenging what we're trying to do with the limited dollars we have. The state has consistently cut the ship funding, HUD funding has gone down. So we here in Palm Beach County in the last couple of years, you have given me permission to set aside five million dollars each of those years, which will help us as we move forward. However, our major goal is to try to keep people housed, reduce the number of people that are homeless. And because we're having such a challenge in housing and keeping it affordable, it is nearly impossible unless this county government wants to create our own construction program, which I'm not recommending, and then hold us responsible for actually building those. One of the mechanisms that I believe as we move forward and we identify more and more land that the county could possibly surplus and use for housing, that every single, I, every single acre of that land be used solely for workforce affordable housing. No market rate, just workforce affordable housing. Because what we end up doing is we partner with our private partners, we end up getting eight, ten, fifteen, every now and then twenty-five percent of those units marked for workforce affordable housing. We are so far behind the eight ball that that's not going to get it. So if, when we move to the future, and that's one of the reasons we recommend it to this board, that any bond money be used solely for capacity building, not rehab. That is why we're looking at using these existing dollars coming in on an annual basis to continue working with rehab.
But that capacity building is twenty percent of our need. You're saying that if we approve that bond, we're looking at maybe twenty thousand units out of a hundred thousand needed today?
That is correct. That is absolutely correct. And I am open to any suggestions anyone has and we've reached out before. If people have out of the box thinking, we're open to that. But we, I'm dealing with the dollars, limited dollars that we have, I'm dealing with the limited land that's left and we cannot necessarily, we have not been able to compete with the private sector on bidding for land. And so we are working, we will continue to work with the school board. I know that they have offered up some property, we're going to be talking to them. And so again, we have to keep in mind that even though we would, let's say designate a surplus property for the county, we cannot restrict that county, that property to just government workers or in school teachers and, and police. We would have to open that up and it would be based on people with their certain income. So yes, it is very frustrating, but this fight started in two thousand, identifying it. And it was not moved until two thousand and seven when the workforce housing program came into effect. And so we've got a pot of money, but that pot of money with the cost of housing today will not go very far. So we really need our partners to come to the table and this is not the first time I said it, but it's going to take the private industry coming to the table with government to actually build these units and put them on the ground.
I just don't see where we've moved the ball at all since two thousand and seven.
We have moved the ball. I, it may not have been as much as everybody wanted, but we've moved the ball. We partnered with our, some of our cities that are entitlement cities, City of West Palm, we've got new units that are going in in the Northwood area. We've got one on Banyan Boulevard and Tamaran that we've worked with. We've worked with the housing folks in Delray Beach, we've worked with Boynton. So we've got units that have come out of the ground since that. Is it enough? No, it's not. It's far from enough. But those were the dollars that we had. We've worked in the Glades, so we've got projects, Riviera Beach, we've got projects coming out of the ground, working with others. We, as county government, have not built those projects. We've added dollars to the project to help close the gap and restrict those units. We've got units that we've worked with Palm Beach Land Trusts. So there are things that we are doing. Is it enough? No. Do we have enough money to do it? No. However, we are still moving along, working with our partners and I'm going to continue to say, we do want, we recognize that our non-residential properties pay a higher tax, so they are contributing, but we also need them to come to the table to directly deal with the housing issue we're dealing with today.
And I realize we're not going to solve this today. Commissioner Bernard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I sense your frustration, Mr. Mayor, and we're, you know, as a board, we're learning the different tools that we can use in terms of building housing. And I do know that Commissioner, Vice Mayor Weiss had asked the question in regards to the, I guess, the eight hundred thousand dollars that we, that was used for the, for the tax credit. You know, we gave eight hundred thousand and I, I believe, you know, that was, that equate, equated to almost like eight, eight thousand dollars per unit. And so like in, in, the difference between Dade, Broward and Palm Beach County is we have to create our own funding sources to be able to win these nine percent credits. And they are very, very competitive and they, they have the dedicated funding source that they're using to win these nine percent credits. And so what we're trying to do is how can we create our own funding source to be able to build more and to create the capacity? It's not easy. Winning a nine percent credit, like we're at a disadvantage because we don't have the funding source. And so that's kind of like what we're trying to do is creating that funding source so we can build more. And when you win a nine percent credit, you know, sometimes that's like eighteen million dollars, fifteen to eighteen million dollars in equity that you get to build a project. So what we're trying to do is how can we get more nine percent credit? And, and so in that way, we can get them faster and, and then also, if we're able to, the four percent tax credits, they're not competitive. And so if we have the funding source to be able to add an additional two million or three million to get those going, then we will be able to get more units going. That's kind of like what we're trying to do. And what I've learned is that some of these funding, the E S G, the CDBG and some of the home dollars, they're not there to build capacity as we would like to. And it's frustrating because we know that we have a shortage of housing, but that's not the tool that we can really use to build the, the capacity. So it's frustrating and I've been, I'm, I'm, I've been there.
You feel my pain.
I, I feel your pain and, but I know that H E S is trying their best and this is not a government solution. This is a, like a holistic, everybody's got to be on the same page to address this issue. And I don't believe that the government can solve this. What we can do is provide the tools to have the private sector be able to help us solve this issue.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernard. Okay, Commissioner Sax, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree that what Commissioner Bernard said was, is very true. This, we didn't, this isn't only for the government to solve. This is, this is a, a Palm Beach County issue. I don't like to say problem because I think it's a challenge. Affordable housing is difficult for a lot of people, a lot of people in this county. My question is this, you know the answer. What do other communities in other states of our nation, what are they doing to solve this, as was said a few minutes ago, this holistic problem, holistic challenge of, of affordable housing for our people?
Commissioner, I, I think most municipalities throughout the country are doing what we're doing because we're all facing this crisis at the same time. We're bringing together all of the partners to the table, municipalities. We're bringing together all of the partners to the table, municipalities, the for-profit, the nonprofit partners. They're looking at other funding sources. We, as a county, are looking at a bond issuance as a potential funding source.
That's part of the answer. Has anyone researched what's going on in Seattle, and Portland, and Austin, Texas? What are they doing? Does anybody know? Possibly we could learn from other jurisdictions?
We have looked at other municipalities and counties' plans on what they're doing. Some have done bonds, some have done other funding sources through the county, some really look at repurposing sites, you know, that were commercial. It's really, everybody's looking at all of the things they need to do and put them all together. No one has one magic solution that we've been able to find.
This idea of repurposing is excellent. I've read about, we have, for example, we have, in our county, we have numerous large buildings. Some were malls. Some are in the Town Center Mall, as in other malls. Have we reviewed being able to repurpose some of these spaces? I can see I tipped off somebody to my left, so I will listen now because I like that idea. Go right ahead.
This wonderful board has, a number of years ago, this board approved us going in, doing underlying residential on commercial properties, specifically, let's say, shopping centers, et cetera. But keep in mind, that's in the unincorporated areas. And so the cities, you know, we cannot make, take those actions within municipal boundaries, only in our unincorporated area. So this board has done so. So anybody that's coming in, the comp plan stuff is done, you know, we can work with them and get it through in a much, at a much faster pace and easier because we have done that homework already.
May I, Mayor, continue?
Keep going.
Thank you. The, why is it that the cities won't allow us to look at some of their buildings to see if we could repurpose? I represent unincorporated areas of the county, and I see that there are many buildings in cities that may, that may allow us to work with the city in repurposing their buildings.
We agree with you at, are you volunteering Gardens?
No, I'm volunteering this.
Okay.
Commissioner Moreno, hold on a second.
It's, there is something called home rule, and we're not, you know, we govern unincorporated Palm Beach County. We can work with municipalities, but we can't tell them what to do. But from the perspective of, and you're on Treasure Coast, we've engaged Kim Delaney to talk to a lot of the different municipalities for infill, for, like, she did a project where she, and again, I'm sorry, I'm putting the Gardens hat back on, but she did an infill project where the Gardens Mall, downtown at the Gardens, PGA Station, Lowman's Plaza, as one big master plan, had units dropped into it. So, and Lake Park is doing the same thing. They have engaged Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council to do the same thing at their Twin Cities Mall, which is actually a mall that sits on Lake Park and North Palm property. So the county doesn't need to do that because the cities are engaged in that already, nor can the county tell the city, you need to do this. But the cities are engaged in that because they themselves know that there's a shortage of housing, so they are trying to think outside the box. So I just wanted to say again, it's that whole home rule issue. And, you know, we fight home rule at the legislature all the time, and the municipalities will do the same thing, but they are working to expand their, you know, their availability of density also. And at the end of the day, it goes back to what I said at our workshop, we all have to revisit density. We can't do anything until we revisit density, and the cities are already doing that.
This is why it's so good to have mayors on this board. I know that our mayor, Weinroth, has served on city councils, I'm sure other folks here have as well. So my question goes back to staff. Can we have a report as to what the cities are doing? Because I would like to know, and I think it's part of our whole analysis here, are the cities stepping up to the plate? It seems like they are. And are they helping to solve this issue of affordable housing so that we can bring this into the mix? Thank those cities for stepping up and see what we can do as a county government. I don't want to tell a city what to do, but I think that it would be good to find out that the cities are doing these things so that we know that there is that solution, because I think the cities know better than any, than certainly state or federal government on how to solve these issues of affordable housing within their city limits. So is that something that you have reviewed and can give us a report on either today or some other time?
I think Ms. Baker wants to answer.
I thought Ms. Baker wanted to answer, because of a meeting on Friday.
We did meet with the Palm Beach County City County Managers Association. We had about 36 representatives from various municipalities in the room. We also invited Jack Weir to join us from the Housing Leadership Council, and we discussed the issue. We're all facing the challenges. We're all very conscious of it. We did talk about the portal that our ISS department is creating, and I did, I got the feeling that they are all willing, they got to go back and get, talk to their folks, but they're willing to now start inputting the units that have been approved and things down the pipe. I think Kelly Smallridge asked for this a number of years ago, but I think we're all at the point now, we understand and feel the impact, and so I think they're going to be willing to input that data into the portal. So anybody going to that site would know what's out there, where we're going, and how many units are in the pipeline. So we'll continue our discussion with them. I know that we're looking at churches, we're looking at cities and what properties they have, along with the county and the school board. And we're also going to be, again, talking to the private sector on how do we work with them? How is it possible, if a new development is going up, can we buy down a certain number of units to put folks in? That kind of thing. So we're going to continue our discussion with our city county managers. I think that will take us a long way. And then they, as I do, come back to our individual boards with recommendations on how to move things forward.
May, Mayor, I just want to close. This is excellent that you met last Friday with the cities. I think there's no better group, there's no better level of government to handle this issue than the local, as local as you can with cities. And I think that the solutions are going to lie within the cities to tell us in the county what is the best way to repurpose some of these buildings to help their people on a local, local level. Secondly, and this is important for me to know before we review the issues of bonds for housing, and the second thing is if you could let us know either today or later, what incentives do we give private developers to set aside units for affordable housing? Because that's happening all the time in my district. I'd like to know what they're doing, what do we offer private, because we are not in the business of building and construction. We're, the private entities should do that, and we need to make sure that we give them the right incentives so that they, that's part of their marketing plan. And I think this rises all of us. This makes it, we have a beautiful community, but we need to take care of this affordable housing issue together, local and county government. Thank you.
And if I may add just one comment. The Housing Leadership Council housing plan has 58 action items. We are sharing the plan with each municipality and asking them to comment as well, to tell us what they are doing and how they're contributing. So we'll be consolidating all those comments before we come back to you.
Commissioner McKinley?
Commissioner Sacks, as your person on the Board of Directors of the National Association of Counties, about three years ago, back in 2019, I asked the executive director to create, to work with leadership and try to create a housing task force. I was met with a little bit of resistance, and so I just sent him a text message saying now would be a good time for a housing task force. I have a Board of Directors meeting with NACO, not next week, but the following week, and so I will bring this subject matter up. I've also met with Florida Housing Finance Corporation, Jonathan, and I've asked, one of the suggestions that came out of a rural housing, kind of little mini task force I put together in my own office, was the need to do a carve-out for some of those tax credits for rural communities. And that might be an option, if at least, maybe that's something we can push in future legislative sessions. Because we are, as Commissioner Bernard brought up, we are at a huge disadvantage to communities like Miami-Dade County. And Miami has that dedicated funding source because the legislature approved it. The legislature is not going to approve funding sources like that moving forward, and I would tell you that with a lot of certainty that they're probably not in the mood to create any special districts anymore either. So we've got to figure out other ways to create carve-out type programs with the existing pots of funding. But Commissioner Sacks, I heard you loud and clear, and I'll bring that up at NACO. It's the best way to find out the best practices.
Thank you, Commissioner. Before I get to Vice Mayor, we have, in our county, 22% of our adults are functionally illiterate. According to Literacy Americorps Palm Beach County, 40% of our students going into fourth grade do not read at a reading level. That's the problem. We are dealing with the damage that is resulting from an illiterate population that is not being taught how to have the basic skills that they need to be able to compete in this economy. Rent control is not the answer. Building more workforce affordable housing is a stopgap. We need to be doing what needs to be done to make a population of residents that can compete on a global economy and be able to step up and buy affordable homes and be able to enjoy the lifestyle that Palm Beach County promises. That's the issue. The rest of this is just a Band-Aid on the real problem. And I, again, say that everything we're spending here is not accomplishing the goal of trying to lift people out of poverty, because the ones we're helping are being replaced by two others behind them, and we're just, we're just losing ground. Vice Mayor Weiss.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up on comments of my colleague, Commissioner Bernard, and because you explained the tax credit program in that we allocate the money to them, but then we can spend months waiting for the state to make a determination whether they're going to grant it or not, and then we're already months behind. And can we come up with a program, and maybe we have to go in abeyance on some of this stuff, so that we're actually with, at least the 4% stuff is going to come out of the ground? I mean, we know that they're going to get that, those credits. We bank on these opportunities for the 9%, and then we don't get them, and then we start all, we start all over again. And it's just months go by, and then months again, and it just doesn't make sense.
On that note, we have next steps here. We have, I assume this is the preparation, the action plan?
Yes.
And now you're going to publish this draft plan for public review and comments?
Yes, sir.
You're going to have public meetings?
Yes.
You're coming back to us on July 12?
Yes.
And we can have this discussion again? And then on August 14 will be the deadline for our submission to HUD?
Yes.
Is that all that we want to say on this subject?
I just.
Yes, Commissioner Bernard?
I just want to add, Mr. Mayor, you mentioned that, you know, literacy, that could be an issue, but a lot of our teachers who work, you know, every day in the school system, you know, they went to school, you know, they have a degree, and they fall in the affordable category.
Below it.
You know, so, and that's, and that's the issue, it's just that, you know, they're teaching our kids, and we have to just do everything in our power to try to, you know, give our teachers, our police officers, our firefighters, you know, that opportunity to have a decent affordable housing in the county. Thank you.
It's not an easy solution, and I know we're going to be wrestling with this for a long time to come. Thank you for bringing this forward.
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor Commissioners?
All right. We have beaten this subject up. We're going to take a five-minute break, and then we're going to talk about the South County Administrative Complex. Find your way back to the dais, and we're going to resume our workshop. Our next stop is the South County Administrative Complex Plan, and I have a feeling conversation will somehow evolve back to workforce affordable housing again. Let's do it.
Yes, good morning. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. I'm Eric McClellan, Director of FDNO Strategic Planning, and I'm joined to my right by the Director of FDNO, Isme Ayala Colazo. This workshop builds upon the April 27 workshop of last year on the South County Administrative Complex Master Plan and Redevelopment. By now, I'm quite confident that we all know the general location of the property and the background information on the property, so I'm going to refrain from duplication and proceed directly into the substance of the workshop, which is to, one, present results from stakeholder engagement; two, establish policies that will drive the preparation of a master plan; three, present options to accomplish redevelopment; four, identify financial approaches to redevelopment; and five, obtain board direction on the approach forward. To keep us at a high level of planning and away from any particular details, I'd like to assure you that I will not be presenting any graphic scenarios for redevelopment this time around. During the last workshop, the board gave direction to obtain feedback from the City of Delray Beach, as well as other stakeholders. This slide presents those staff, officials, and stakeholders that were identified for this purpose. FDNO was assisted through all listening sessions by its planning consultant, Ms. Colleen Walter from Urban Design Studio, who is in the audience for any questions or third-party validations. I'll provide a summary of each of the meetings and the substantive information that resulted. Starting with the City Management and Development Services Department staff from Delray Beach, they support government offices and mass transit operations on the site. They envision workforce housing, multi-story buildings with a mix of commercial uses laid out in a series of blocks for ease of navigating through the property. They prefer parking structures to surface parking lots to maximize development potential. They expect site redevelopment to be phased in order to preserve continuous governmental operations. They would like amenities such as shade trees and pedestrian furniture along the Congress Avenue frontage, and prefer that the existing communication tower, fueling facility, and maintenance operations be relocated off-site. Next, we met with tax collector Ann Gannon and a member of her staff, given their standalone facility on the property, and the representation at the last workshop of their desire to locate tax collector operations elsewhere in the future. That approach was again reiterated with an anticipated timeframe of five to 10 years to follow completion of facility activities in Westlake and Palm Beach Gardens. Ms. Gannon indicated that similar to her approach with Westlake and Palm Beach Gardens facilities, she expects to manage the design and construction of those facilities. However, she indicated she could benefit from collaboration with the county in the siting of same. FDNO did share various county properties, county-owned properties that would be available for the relocation, however, none fall within the targeted service area. So we will need to work closely to make sure that there is no opportunity that's missed that might emerge. Ms. Gannon proposed that we minimize investment in the existing facility, since relocation of operations and repurposing of the underlying land are anticipated. She also addressed a question about a task force that was referenced during the last workshop by stating that it had been inactive for some time. No other constitutional officers or current occupants of the complex were said to have participated or been approached on the topic. The Greater Delray Beach Chamber of Commerce was kind enough to assemble their president and CEO, Stephanie Immelman, along with members Jim Chard, Jeff Pearlman, Steve Mackey, and Rick Castor for a session. Some comments were met with mixed reaction, but there were some clear themes that emerged. For one, county services would be expected to remain on the property and continuous service delivery not be interrupted. Expectations to that would apply, exceptions, rather, to that would apply to the existing maintenance operations and fueling facility. The group supported a needs assessment being performed to determine the floor space and land area required for county programming. Like the city, they envision multi-story buildings and parking structures in lieu of surface parking lots. They support middle-income housing being incorporated and mass transit operations remaining on-site. They're interested in space to support employment and high-tech businesses and endorse a public-private partnership, or P3, being arranged through a RFP process. A joint session was conducted with SFRTA, or Tri-Rail Leadership, accompanied by Kim Delaney of the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council. The former expressed that Tri-Rail station must remain operational throughout redevelopment, with parking being able to be reduced to 40 to 50 spaces for some periods of time, with dedicated drop-off and pickup accommodations being available at all times. A supply of 150 to 200 parking spaces serving the station will need to result upon redevelopment, either on an exclusive basis or within shared parking facilities, with no defined requirements for the placement but for safety. Funding for construction, operation, and/or maintenance was said to not be available, as well as limitations applying to receipt and use of any grant funding. They envision redevelopment producing pedestrian and vehicular connections, internal and external, to the property. And they would also expect private sector involvement in the design and development process. A full report detailing these meetings and including products that were developed by stakeholders was prepared, distributed to the stakeholders for review, editing, and concurrence, and that was Attachment 3 to this workshop item. So staff took all of the information that was collected from those sessions and integrated the public facility needs and objectives to arrive at proposed guiding policies for redevelopment. Those are outlined in Attachment 4 of the item and are presented on the slide that's now on the screen. These guiding policies must be interpreted as a continuum that extends from primarily government interest to primarily private interests. Undoubtedly, public and private sectors hold an interest in the totality of these guiding policies, the distinction resulting only in the magnitude of each individual interest. The items that are in green are primarily government interests. These include continuity of operations for unbroken service delivery to the public, retention of the communication tower on-site, given its optimal siting in the service area and calibration with towers that are relocated remote, and also no impact to public operations or services that would affect schedule, cost, safety, comfort, or other material business conditions. Staff has assigned these the highest priority, given the prime location of the property for public service delivery, the limited supply of property elsewhere in the vicinity to realize colocation, and the fundamental importance of reliability and predictability to governmental operations at any organizational level. The next two items are where we found overlap in stakeholder and government interests. This includes the provision of workforce housing on the property to meet our pressing regional need, and opportunity for private sector development activity. The extent to which both can be accommodated will rely upon the completion of governmental programming and the ensuing preparation of a conceptual master plan. Finally, the items that are in blue are the primary private interests as expressed by the stakeholders with which we engaged. The form of development was indicated to be important, and we have captured that as Transit Oriented Development, or TOD. This entails vertical integration of uses in mixed, multi-story buildings, combined with structured parking and well-defined blocks to preserve a footprint for greater development yield and pedestrian ease, and ultimately reliance on the mass transit that operates from the property. Next is interconnectivity with adjacent properties to further leverage patronage to future improvements on the property. Also preserving the opportunity for delivering space that would contribute to business attraction and economic development, and finishing the property with elements and amenities that will attract and beautify the frontage of Congress Avenue. Staff recommends the Board approve these guiding policies, and in the order of priority as presented, for the creation of a master plan that will govern the redevelopment of the property. Now with that easy business addressed, I'm going to turn it over to Isme, who's going to address the options and financial approaches.
Thank you, Eric, and good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. We have identified four options for approaching the site redevelopment that I will be presenting. What we are calling Option Number One is the development of a space planning program for all the public uses, users, and operations requiring an accommodation. This yields the base information that becomes the basis of due diligence, design, and master planning. So this effort is required regardless of how we might proceed, and informs the site footprint necessary to redevelop all public facilities to remain on the property. Combined with the guiding policies that Eric presented, minimizing the government facility footprint will be a fundamental objective of the effort. We will need professional services to conclude with a conceptual master plan depicting that footprint. From there, we could develop an RFP for disposition of surplus property to a private redevelopment partner to fill the balance and complete the master plan. Depending upon the arrangement, construction of the public facilities could proceed or be concurrent with the private improvements. Option Number Two is to proceed with an RFP seeking a public-private partnership, or a Triple-P arrangement from the onset. This option emerged as a preference of the majority of the stakeholders that participate in ambitioning sessions conducted in preparation for this workshop. No specific reasons were identified for that preference, but those that are here today could certainly speak to that point if so the Board wishes. Option Number Three is to proceed with an RFP seeking a Triple-P arrangement providing for off-site real estate upon wish to construct replacement county facilities. In exchange, county ownership of the complex will be transferred in whole or in part to the selected partner. Option Number Four is to proceed with the conceptual master plan presented in our prior workshops. The government facilities will first be constructed to completion in a manner that preserves strategic areas for future development of additional improvements, be that upon vacant surplus property and/or overhead where possible. This option is effectively the approach taken to the county's wedge property in downtown West Palm Beach with transit billish. This slide offers a high-level comparison of certain factors that are relevant to and descriptive of each of the four options. The facing differences are responsive to the operational continuity, which you will recall Eric identified as our highest priority. The represented time estimates to achieve final construction completion is also largely a function of operational continuity, but also time invested in diligent programming and design as well as completion of required procurement. No matter what option you choose, other than continuing with the status quo, there are two fundamental considerations for partnering agencies at the complex that we, that have policy implications. First is the Health Center, which is a county-owned and maintained building but operated by the Florida Department of Health, Palm Beach County. This facility and the other clinics countywide are the result of historic preference of this Board to make services accessible at satellite locations. As such, the department is not expected to have the financial ability to make a capital contribution since their proceeds are committed largely to service delivery. The cost of an equivalent amount of space to replace that, what currently exists, is estimated at approximately $3.5 million. That amount was not captured by the $52 million estimated by staff to accomplish the conceptual master plan previously presented, since the building was being retained in place. So this will either require a capital commitment from the county, an indirect county commitment through a reduced offering if a private partner were required to replace the space associated with the facility, or that the facility and services be foregone in this service area. The other consideration is Tri-Rail, which currently utilizes about 166 surface parking spaces to serve its patrons and operators. Tri-Rail has indicated interest in up to 200 parking spaces, which will be in the form of a parking structure per the TOD development vision. FDO estimates that improvement will cost approximately $7 million. Tri-Rail indicated intentions for an external source to fund that capital expense. If neither Tri-Rail nor the county is willing to directly cover that expense, the county will still need to indirectly come to contribute through a discounted financial commitment of a private partner having interest in delivering improvements upon the property if they were required to deliver the parking structure on Tri-Rail's behalf. All that being said, staff recommendation is Option Number One, to commence programming and due diligence necessary towards arriving in a meaningful master plan for complete site redevelopment. We anticipate a duration of about a year for data collection and program development, followed by six months of due diligence and conceptual master plan development. This is effectively the needs assessment raised by the Delray Chamber and positions us to produce representative plans for county facilities on the site and on the Atlantic Common Civic Site, and will better inform planning, decision-making, and cost estimating. There are many reasons why staff is recommending this option. For one, our five-year planning horizon is quite demanding with projects already included in the CIP, IST project plan, ARPA plan, active contractual obligations such as the ballpark of the Palm Beaches, Roger Dean Stadium, Transit Billish, Urban Campus, and others, and daily duties and management. Option Number One has no material consequence to those priorities and production. The same likely will not hold by the time commitments require of Option Number Two and Number Three. Building upon that, programming requires opportunity for thoughtful consideration and careful study be afforded to all government operators. Without the influence of an accelerated schedule to complete this mission that comes with a third-party interest in both Options Number Two and Three, Option Number One is truly aligned with best government interest of the county into the future. Furthermore, this option achieves what we have been referring to as the best balance in having public and private sectors contribute to the development in the areas where each one holds expertise. This slide offers other considerations in favor of Option Number One. We cannot stress enough the importance of early planning to the total lifecycle cost of the facility operations and maintenance. Consolidation also brings efficiencies and savings whereby the off-site placement model of Option Three is the complete opposite approach. We do not recommend that approval, and hence not Option Three. Something obviously has to give before demolition redevelopment can commence. While leasing could be a short-term solution, it's not one that we recommend due to, number one, rental costs being a lost investment to the county that could otherwise have gone to capital improvement purposes. Number two, the interruption and expense associated with any move, much less multiple moves when introducing an interim accommodation. And number three, the loss of location predictability to recipients of public service. What we do now know is that, number one, allocated funds under IST are available to sustain all existing operations in place for the foreseeable future. And number two, that relocation of the tax collector will physically free up approximately 5.5 acres in the southerly portion of the site and adjacent thereto for replacement of county facilities in five to 10 years at no consequence to operational continuity for the county and a constitutional officer or Tri-Rail. Option Number One can be completed in full in this same time horizon. Also, in consideration of operational continuity, Community Services now occupies approximately 8,000 square feet of space in the administration building for daily operations. This was a last resort placement upon the departure of Palm Trend to its expanded facility on Congress Avenue and lack of space elsewhere at county facilities. A replacement accommodation will become available no later than 2028, and sooner if demanded by the Urban Campus Initiative. Some programming will be fulfilled at the Atlantic Common Civic Site. This will require coordination with the Alliance of Delray Residential Association and satisfaction of a condition of approval in the development order applicable to that property. Signing approval and a funding commitment must also be secured to advance the improvement of that property, which again takes us to a timeframe that aligns with the tax collector and community services relocations. Lastly, Option Four, or the conceptual master plan previously presented by staff, receive no Board support. So naturally, that is not going to be our recommendation to you today. Funding opportunities also play a role in our recommended Option Number One. Again, current funding is limited to $6 million for renewal and replacement of the current campus per the IST project plan. Nothing additional is scheduled in our five-year CIP. This slide presents most of the traditional funding sources utilized to implement our capital planning. Given the magnitude of cost to redevelop and deliver all replacement facilities and accounting for reasonable growth capacity, those will not be sufficient to cover all costs of redevelopment in a single phase. This leads us to bond issuance or public-private partnership as the funding approach. As we know, Palm Beach County has a stellar credit rating, and as a result, significant bonding capacity to cover necessary capital expenses. That also comes with the benefit of minimal interest cost to the county for issuing bonds. On the other hand, a P3 is an arrangement where costs, where access to capital is made possible by guaranteeing a private partner some future asset, service, or other material value in exchange for the upfront private capital. In this case, the residual land area will induce the private partner's interest. Since the county has already access to capital without a P3, as well as institutional knowledge and existing contracts for the necessary professional services to realize this redevelopment, we recommend bonding as the best financial approach to meet and protect our operational needs, uphold continuity of operations, and minimize recurring operating maintenance expenses. This is the standard daily practice for FDO, and thus not requires any additional third-party to realize success, any different than any of our other county capital projects. Initial funding to complete programming, needs assessment, and develop a conceptual master plan is readily available from a portion of the 6 million IST funds allocated to the renewal and replacement of the complex. The bond funding will then be required for design permitting and construction. Proceeds from the eventual disposition of surplus real estate at the complex per the master plan, and results of an RFP to select a private redevelopment partner to complete the same could be used to fund public improvements and/or repayment of the bond debt. Another option could be to enter into a ground lease for development of the surplus property rather than disposing of the fee simple interest on the same. What will be the most beneficial scenario for the county, disposing or ground leasing a portion of the site, will be more easily ascertainable once staff completes programming, initial master planning, and obtains appraisals of the property. This slide shows or highlights considerations in support of staff's recommendation. Without being repetitive, I will reemphasize only that administration of a contractual obligation to private pairs entails a significant staff effort and continuing time commitment that can compete with other existing priorities and assignments. And as we all know, we do have limitations of human capacity. There are related planning initiatives scheduled in the immediate time horizon that will afford us the time to plan and prepare for site redevelopment without compromising any of the driving policies. So to conclude, staff recommends that the driving policies as presented and included as Attachment 4 to this workshop be used as the guide to a master plan for site redevelopment. That Option Number One, consisting of a space planning program and needs assessment to inform the development of a master plan, that the use of proceeds from the $6 million allocated in the IST plan, project plan, as the financial approach for immediate planning expenses, the issuance of a bond as a financial approach for design permitting and construction of county improvements with issuance of an RFP to select a private partner to complete full-site redevelopment, open surplus property, and the use of proceeds from the future sale or potential ground lease of surplus property and accomplice to finance bond debt. I would like to emphasize and clarify that if we're authorized to move forward once we complete the programming analysis and needs assessment, we will come back to this Board with that information to show the results and show what we have been able to identify with the assistance of our consultants. So with all that said, that concludes our presentation, and we're happy to take any questions as you deem appropriate.
Thank you, Isme. All right. Let's start with your guiding principles or policies, this Venn diagram. I have some problems with it, especially when you say you want no impact on public operations. I think that's certainly, when we say number one, you're going to have continuity of public operations, we certainly want to ensure that. That you're going to want to guarantee no impact, I think that's unrealistic, and I think that that should just be stricken off of this guiding principles. That's not going to be. I also think that when we take a... I also think that when we take a look at government needs and, what is the word next to government? My eyes, you can't do this to someone who's approaching 70. I need my bifocals, yes.
Which number?
What is that right there?
That's continued public operations.
Public operations, thank you. To me, transit-oriented development is a priority of the government. To me, economic development is a priority of the government. So, I mean, I don't want to get into, you know, splitting hairs on this, but I just think if we're going to use these as guiding policies, I have some problems even with that. And I know that you would have been much happier had we just accepted what was the original plan on the table, which would put some lipstick on the proverbial pig and make it look prettier. And we've certainly gone far afield of that. Let me throw something else on the table, which is going to give you additional acid indigestion. Why do we need to have the three district commissioners all in that one building? The five, District Five, District Seven, and District Four have no need to be together. And the fact is, our state reps, they find them a home in their districts and they, you know, they prosper that way, whether they're state reps or state senators. I think that we need to take a priority of what this land is the best for and a TOD which will have as much workforce affordable housing on it as possible. To me, it's right up there, especially if this conversation we had to last hour. So we need to be looking at the best utilization of this property, and it may mean, you know, obviously Ann Gannon's decision to look west is great. It opens up a tremendous amount of space. The idea of getting the surface parking reduced and putting a garage there is great. And the idea potentially, and I haven't spoken to my colleagues because I can't, but I bet you that District Seven and District Five would be just as happy as me to find a home closer to our district, although District Seven actually isn't District Seven. But there's no reason for those things to be there. And so I think we need to step back and say, what is the best, highest and best use? Let's think like property appraisers. What is the highest and best use of this property? And right now, it is a shanda, what we're doing with this property. From the old country meeting, it's not being done properly. So I'm going to stop for a second. I have plenty more to say, but I'm going to let my friends from District Five and District Seven pipe in here. Commissioner Sax.
I've really enjoyed sharing that area with you, Mayor, and Commissioner Bernard. The problem is that we're never there at the same time. And I think what started out as a good idea has now met its, it's over. It's over. I applaud what, and I concur, what the mayor talked about with the highest and best use of this land, especially after the conversation we had earlier today in this board meeting. The highest and best use of that land is housing, 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 housing. Not only that, but it's so perfectly located by the train station as well as by buses, bus routes that go up and down Congress. And of course, it's close to the entrance to I-95. So, number one, the highest and best use, of course, is housing, housing, housing. Number two, I also concur with what he said when it might have been years ago that this was a good location. Today, if we look back at what the state is doing for legislators, they are putting legislators in their districts with district offices. The state pays for so much for rent. If you want to get a higher rent, you got to pay for it out of your own pocket. But I think it makes sense, and I think that it would be, even though I enjoy having the South County office, it's very well-kept, we have good security, parking is great. However, I think that in today's world, that space can best be used for housing and let the county commissioners, at least for me, speak. Let me find an office in my district. And I'm sure that the cost effectiveness would be a lot more beneficial to the county to get a small office in the county than to pay for this perfect spot, this location that has been well-served, but now it's time to move on. And so I would certainly agree with the mayor on that. Thank you. Thank you for the work you've done on this.
Commissioner Bernard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a great presentation, and I want to thank staff for bringing this here and also to, you know, having the stakeholder meetings, which is really good, to help us kind of like make decisions. To me, it just seems like option four is just, you know, we can just basically take option four off the table. And I do believe that we do need to find out exactly, like in your option one, where it says that development of a formal space planning program, I think we do need to know exactly what's going on over there and what's truly, truly, truly needed. And if, you know, if the space is not really being occupied properly, then maybe it shouldn't be there, as was mentioned with the commissioners' offices. For me, I don't believe that having an office there is that important if the needs of housing is really, really important, where you have the Delray Courthouses east of, on Atlantic, that could be an office for, let's say, District Seven. If District Five wants to have another office somewhere else, that's fine with me, or District Four, and that's okay. But we need to really know exactly what are the true, true needs. And if there are things that could be moved somewhere else, then maybe it's moved somewhere else. And then, once you do that assessment, and then I believe this board can decide whether we should do the PPP arrangement. I think that, in my opinion, I think that we want, we want to get the private sector to be creative and to bring something to us also. So I'm torn between part of option one and also option two, because I do want to see what the private sector want to try to do over there in terms of being creative. And so I'm just torn.
May I?
Thank you, Commissioner Marino. I'm sorry, Commissioner Bernard, it's Commissioner Marino now.
Mr. Mayor, hold on. This is, we wanted to weigh in.
So I wanted to share something with you. I think we will argue that option number one gives you that balance, because what we have in mind, what we are proposing to the board is, let us do our needs assessment. We need that. And sorry, I keep emphasizing, but we need to know what we need to know in order to be able to provide you with the information. And once we get that, we're not saying, let's go ahead and finalize the master plan and let the privates know what we want to do. We're saying, let us take it to an initial phase, where then we can issue an RFP and have that private partner work with us in finalizing an optimal layout. And I think that strikes a balance between public and private with the end result being maximizing what each one of those knows to do best, right? So bringing the public value into the equation, but also bringing the private expertise, letting them provide input into our base level planning and build upon it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Bernard. Commissioner Marino, your turn.
Thank you. Considering this is a seven-to-10-year project, and we're talking about affordable housing that needs, and I said the word today like 37 times at our last meeting, what can we do today in a needs assessment to carve out space to put affordable housing there now? On your Page Six of the backup documentation, it says that we can put, with affordable housing and incentives and whatnot, we can put 1,200 units there. What can we do to put those 1,200 units there now? That is, all of this is all well and good, we're talking seven to 10 years, that doesn't have an impact today. So how can we get those 1,200-plus units on this property today, tomorrow, next year, but 10 years from now? It's, you know, eh! We need them today. So how do we do that? How do we, in the needs assessment, how do we, in the overall master plan, how do we get that done today? There's that word again, today.
Having that needs assessment done is a key component, because it goes back to recommending what level of, amount of property can be disposed. And that will take us about a year to complete.
Oh, my God.
Do you want to add something, Eric?
Can we do it faster than a year? Because, again, we're talking about needing housing today. If we just get the needs assessment done in a year, and then we have to RFP and all that other kind of stuff, I mean, it's at least two or three years before there's a unit that goes on that property. How do we get this done more quickly?
Commissioner, I was going to say, we are focused on other sites presently to deliver workforce housing. It's not this specific location, but time is being invested to deliver housing in other locations. The concern ultimately here is that if we dispose of property for non-county operations, we have nowhere else to go. We have nothing else, and we do not want to be the staff that comes back to you and says, we did this, and now we've got nowhere to go. And we're buying additional real estate at the price of $1 million-plus an acre. So that's why we're being so cautious and so careful. South County, we have very limited holdings. Everything has to go somewhere, and if it's not here, it's got to be somewhere else, and there's not a whole lot we own to go somewhere else.
I do understand that, but I do want to say that when we talk about affordable housing or TOD, this is a perfect location, because not only are we putting units where there's rail and where there's bus, we need to make our bus and our rail more efficient and actually have more people using them. So wherever we're going to, again, add density, it needs to be in areas where there is an availability of mass transit, so that mass transit is more effective, too.
So let me add something, if I may. I think that when we look at our current complex, we have a footprint that is dispersed, right? So we have that main admin building, we have the TCO facility, and we have the health department. If you look at what's left, it's minimal and not necessarily optimal, I will argue, based on the placement. And one of the things that we would like to be authorized to do is consider the possibility of consolidating those uses. You know, in the past, we had not recommended looking at the health department, but maybe that's part of the question now. You know, can we free up this footprint they occupy by consolidating that use with other county uses in a multi-story building? And that will free up additional space. Since we have not had that in-depth conversation with the health department, we don't know the square footage they need. We don't know what their growth projections are. So I think what we are saying, we feel the urgency, but at the same time, to be able to identify what can be disposed of and do it in an efficient way that maximizes that end result, we need to get a base level information that we don't have at this point.
Well, again, I'm going to say, we need units today, not tomorrow, not a year from now, not two years from now. So whatever you can do to speed up this process would be the most important thing to this board, and I'm sure I'm speaking for the rest of the board when I say that. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation and following up on our last discussion on this. I share my colleagues' concern about the timing, especially of the housing units. I mean, that's, we're all trying to figure out how to do that as quickly as possible. So as we move forward, I think that, you know, if there's a way to carve off a piece and say, let's move on it, I think that would be preferable. I'm going to go back to you on Page 11 of your slides, your comparative table. I just want to make sure I'm understanding this. On your option one, design services responsibility is public, but we don't do that ourselves, do we?
No, we hire. We hire consultants, right?
So it's private?
It's private. We do not do in-house design, okay? We compete them, and we hire consultants to do the design services for us.
Okay, so that's really, that's really private.
We are leading the process, you know?
I understand that, but it's being done by other people, so it's not taking, other than the oversight that staff has to provide, we're not having to put people on this project, per se.
That is correct.
Okay. So I think, and then, on the tower relocation, I think you need to go out to potential partners and find out what it would cost to relocate that tower. That tower takes up a lot of space, provides, I mean, it provides a service that we need, but it doesn't have to be there. There's other places that tower can be sited without being on that property, and that prohibits other development happening around it. So I think the fact that nobody wants to even broach the subject, even talk about it, to me is, it's not acceptable. We need to go to the private sector, find out what they would take to relocate it, how much it would cost, and I want that to be included as we move forward, because to just say we can't do that doesn't make sense.
May I respond to that?
Of course.
This is a very important asset on this property. To give you some background, this particular tower was constructed originally, I believe, in 1982. In the early 2000s, it was structurally reinforced, and the top 25 feet was taken off of it to withstand additional wind load. We've been attempting to replace this tower for a number of years. We've held off on the funding due to the ongoing conversations on this property. We put $2.5 million in our budget this year to replace it. I don't want to be an alarmist, but this is a 40-plus-year-old tower that's been subject to weather for all those years, and it's a metal construction. It needs to be replaced. When we talk about moving it off-site, physically, is it possible? It is. We have a private partner who is our consultant, who informs us about all of the engineering that needs to go into relocating, all of the additional changes to towers elsewhere. I really think there's two key components when we're talking about the limitations that the tower imposes on the property. First, I get the impression that we're thinking there's some kind of radius that's a no-build zone around this tower. That's not necessarily true. The equipment height on this tower would allow construction at the footprint of the tower, probably somewhere to the tune of five stories, before you start to interfere with the bandwidth coming off the microwave equipment. The second issue is usually the fall zone. You don't want the tower to fall over or snap and fall on something below it, but you can engineer these towers to minimize the fall zone. Might take additional money. If that's the priority of this board, we'll certainly put the money towards reinforcing that tower. But this is a critical location for this tower. If we move it off-site, we're going to have to do regulatory approvals through the city of Delray Beach, that's going to be very lengthy. And again, I don't want to be an alarmist, but this tower needs to be replaced.
Okay, I'm not an expert on it, but I've given you my opinion about it. And then, lastly, I want to talk about the SFRTA tri-rail parking and what that means. I don't understand how they need 40 spaces during the construction, but afterwards, they need 200.
We wish they were here to speak for themselves today. I don't know if they've arrived or not.
I mean, that's, we're talking about...
We have a board member here.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm a board member, and we have a budget workshop meeting tomorrow, and I can bring this back, but I would, and I just actually got a text from Steve Abrams asking if we've connected with the neighboring properties to see if we could expand our footprint. But I would suffice it to say that if we do construction, are we minimizing what would be there at that time? So we're moving, we're moving people off who might be using tri-rail, so that's why it would be a minimization of parking. Did that make sense, what I just said? If we're constructing, which means we're emptying out the buildings and relocating those people that are working there, they will not need to come and go, and if they're using tri-rail to come and go, and they're relocated someplace else, they won't need to, they need the parking.
It's actually a great example of continuity of operations, governmental continuity. They might not need the full 150 to 200 spaces. They can live in a short duration with that limited parking supply during the construction phase, but it's what they're willing to endure as a short-term accommodation to accomplish the redevelopment.
So are they, are they planning to collect rents to repay us the $7 million?
They did not indicate that was their intent.
They don't have any money. We don't have any money.
So, okay.
Commissioner, that's a topic that was discussed, and that's why we highlighted it through our presentation. They have expressed unavailability of funding, other than the possibility of having grants that they will need to apply to, obviously, and be awarded in order to contribute to the redevelopment. the redevelopment.
And again, since we have our budget workshop tomorrow, this will be, I can bring this up as a discussion point.
Okay, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
All right. You know, I, I think in terms of the, I would, I, you know, and I, in just hearing about Mr. Abrams' tweet, or text, or whatever it was, have, have we gone out and talked to surrounding property owners about combining and what that could do and what that would look like?
We've had some conversations over the years, some outreach. I wouldn't say we've sat down and had any genuine discussions. If there's interest that they want to bring to us, we're, you know, they know how to find us, they know where we are, we can't hide, but there really has not been any that I could speak of to date.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Just jumping on the, the comments of the vice mayor, you know, technology has changed in 40 years, notwithstanding the fact the thing may fall down because of the corrosion of the metal. I can't believe, and we've had this conversation with, with the administrator and with, obviously, with Esteme and with Fay before you. It's immovable, can't touch it, this is the way it's got to be. I don't accept it either. I think we need to look beyond that tower. That tower, I'm not going to do anything to interfere with emergency services, but that's not the answer. We need to be able to look, 40 years ago, 1982 was then, we know the world has changed quite a bit in electronics, maybe even satellite, who knows? I am not an engineer, I have no idea, but there must be a better way. So please, don't tell us that's the only way that this can be accomplished. Okay.
Mayor, if, if I may, I think that bring us, will bring us back to completing that needs assessment. You know, to this point, we have only been able to do what we are authorized to do, which is renewal replacement under the $6 million ISD project, okay? We cannot retain those services that we will need to in order to look for other options, you know? That assessment has not been done. We're happy to undertake it as part of that programming.
Very good, thank you. Commissioner McKinley?
Mr. Mayor, can I just add?
Oh, yes, sure.
At some point, just to let you know, that Twitter was a public company.
Well said, Commissioner.
Commissioner McKinley, on that note.
Hopping on the comment train there, Mr. Mayor. So, you know, following some of these conversations, it's like that old algebra equation, you know, if the train leaves Station A and it leaves Station B, at what point do they meet paths and land in Albuquerque? I don't know, this is all, look, one of the times that we brought this item before the board, I, I blew it up because of the Western County complex out there being in such horrible shape. Not going to do that today. I am just going to express frustration. I'm looking at the summary of this item. Workshops have been conducted with the Board of County Commissioners on October 29th, 2019, June 23rd, 2020, and April 27th, 2021. And here we are today in 2022, and staff is still seeking board direction. If you're wondering why we're frustrated when you tell us that a needs assessment is going to take a year, and then you're going to come back with that needs assessment a year from now and seek board direction, and this staff summary is going to say 2019, 2020, 2021, 2022, by the time we get an RFP out there after we give you more direction in 2023, then it's going to be 2024 by the time that RFP is issued, and 2025 by the time we get design done, 2026 by the time we get a shovel in the ground. Government needs to stop working this damn slow. And we, we, we know what the needs are. That complex was built, what year was that complex built?
60s.
It's all single-story. You know, you're, you're, you're right on a commercial corridor there. It's ripe to go up. Go to the city of Delray Beach if we have to and ask them for permission to go five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 stories tall and consolidate all those services into buildings in so that you've got more room for housing. And this idea that the health department needs one building, the tax collector needs another building, and we need the fueling station here and the facility station there, I mean, that, that's old school. We're not doing that anymore in these corridors. And, I mean, the issue with the communications tower, I know it's Commissioner Moreno's district, but I've got friends in there who reach out to me, and I've kicked them to your office. But the whole "not in my backyard" issue is the biggest issue in trying to relocate a communications tower. But you're so close to I-95, I've got to think that there's a way to figure that out. We don't need to be handling this. We need to get a company in here that can do the needs assessment and the design work all at once and bring us back something in, in, in short order. This two and a half, we're going on two and a half, almost three years since we originally had a conversation, and we're still talking about giving staff direction. It, it's, I'm incredibly frustrated. By the time we get anything done, even a shovel on the ground at this rate, even the whole sales tax, which this is one of the projects under the sales tax referendum, some of it, that's going to be expired. So move, move. I, I, and I, and I say that, and I hope after I'm gone that you'll have these same comments when we start talking about 10 years from now being able to replace the facility out in the Western communities. It's too slow, way too slow.
And to that point, Commissioner McKinley makes a valid point, you know? Commissioner Abrams was sitting up here when this thing started, the conversation. He had one view, we have another view. The people who come behind us are going to have another view. You're going to have more cooks in the, in the kitchen, and it's just going to change things. You need to move expedite and get this thing moving forward. All right, I'm going to take Commissioner Sacks, Commissioner Moreno, then we have some public comments.
So, when was this facility built? When was the facility built?
1968 to 1972, with additions in 1990s.
It took us about four or five years to build it. How long will it take to destroy it?
That will depend on moving out the services that we currently have.
How quickly can you come back here? I know there are companies that are really very willing to work on this. So when can you come back?
So here will be my, my response to that. If we're authorized to get a consultant on board, and we do have some contracts already in place with the same private consultants that everyone else uses, right? So those are the consultants we have on board. Let us get them on board and expedite that assessment. The needs assessment, what it tells us, going back to the question that, or the comment that Commissioner McKinley made, is it let us know how many square footage we need for use one, two, and three, and if we can combine them or not. It tells us, you know, optimal combination flow of operations and space needed. That's what we need.
I just asked, when can you come back with it?
Assuming we are authorized today?
Yes, ma'am.
We will go ahead and get the proposal, and I will estimate fast track, maybe six months, nine months to meet with all the departments.
Four months?
I don't think we can even accomplish our procurement process.
Six months.
That's one thing I'd like to be very clear about, is we don't always make the rules, but we have to abide by them. So we have procurement policies and processes we have to go through, we have permitting processes that we have to go through, and we're not in control of those timeframes. They are what they are. If we could do them faster, we would, but we would be violating our own rules and policies and doing so.
Which we cannot do.
No, I understand, but, and I understand that there's a lot of work, and I also understand that, as we discussed yesterday when we were discussing this on the review, that there, that there are stakeholders out there that are not county, and that should be, should be paying rent if we continue on anymore. We're not going to discuss that now because I don't want to complicate the issue, but I will not tolerate stakeholders who get federal and state funds to be riding on our, on our ticket, on our money. Secondly, and I won't complicate it by going into it again, any discussion of using county land that is northeast of the Turnpike on Atlantic Avenue as a parking facility for maintenance vehicles for parks will need to come under serious discussion from this board. I'm not going to go into it now, but you know I vehemently oppose using that acreage, just not a lot of acreage, for park maintenance vehicles. So let me state my objection publicly on the record, that any plan moving forward will certainly not have those, those vehicles parked on that area of land, which is outside the Ag Reserve, but right next to the Ag Reserve. And thirdly, let's, let's move. We've got a problem here in this county, it's called housing. We've got an area of land that is prime for housing. I think that county government can keep pace with the needs of the county and move forward quickly. Whatever we can do to help you, count on us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Moreno.
And just quickly, and I'd like to say thank you to all of those that are at home or at their offices, listening or watching, because I've been getting feedback from Mr. Abrams, and the answer about the 40 spaces is that we would encourage, this is now Tri-Rail speaking, they would encourage riders to use the Boca or Boynton stations during construction, but would want the full complement back after construction.
And obviously, the idea of a kiss-and-ride versus park-and-ride is also a possibility and mobility options, so we can look at that, yes.
Mayor, I would like to make sure that I clarify something, just so that is, continues to be part of the conversation, and following up on the comment that Eric made, it goes back to the processes we are required to follow. So be it that we are authorized to move forward and retain consulting services to do the program assessment, or be it that another development option gets chosen, we still need to go through those processes. So there is going to be a time for procurement publicly, competitively, in a competitive fashion to be put out there. If we were to bid this going out to the private sector, we still need to know where we stand, and we still need to know what our needs are. The project that we have now authorized and under which we can proceed is only renewal replacement. Thing goes back to your comment about how the project has evolved through the years and how, at one point, it was redevelopment, then it changed to renewal replacement, and now another option is being considered. So depending on which way we end up, we're authorized then to use those funds for that call.
The quicker you get it done, the less cooks you're going to have in the kitchen with you telling you, maybe we have a different idea which way to go. All right. First, before we get into comments on this item, I was, I had an item or a public comment from Item 5A. It was just a written comment from Pam O'Brien, who is the president and CEO of AVDA, and her comments were basically thanking the, the county for the CDBG funds that they have received, and I'm going to look for a motion to receive and file. I have a motion, so moved by the vice mayor, seconded by Commissioner Moreno. All in favor, all opposed, show that is approved, six to zero, with Commissioner Bernard off the dais. And now we're going to take our comments from our, we have two comment cards, and the first comment will be from attorney Neil Schiller.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. I guess I'll just say click to quick forward. Thank you so much. So my name is Neil Schiller, as you know. I am with the law firm, The Government Law Group, Northwest, 137 Northwest First Avenue in Delray Beach. I'm here today representing Bainon Real Estate Group, who has developed the Andre Design District, and we are hoping to get some direction from the county commission about parking. So our request is to, we are seeking a lease with the county for off-hours parking and access to some parking spots at the South County Governmental Center Complex and Health Department. We describe off-hours as 6:00 PM to midnight, when those parking spaces aren't being used. The spaces would be used exclusively for a valet operation, and obviously, they would sign all the hold harmless agreements and other agreements that you need. You know where the site is? I don't have to, to show you, well, actually, I do. So this is directly adjacent to the governmental center. You can see the outline. It's a warehouse district. It was previously used primarily for automotive uses, repair, et cetera, and disposal. And now, what my client has done was create a work-play district for affordable retail and office spaces from 200 square feet all the way to 5,000 square feet. These include versatile layouts. This is very similar to what sparked a revolution in Wynwood. So you have tenants that are advertising companies, yoga studios, home designers, hair studios, event studios, et cetera, recording studios. In addition, they've invested a lot of money in art and murals to really beautify this area. And here are some interior spaces, there's another mural, some more interior, interior spaces that were built out by tenants. So this is really exciting for this, for this area. Their phase two, which is one of the reasons why they're seeking these parking spaces, is for a brewery, a Bond Street Ale and Coffee that will serve breakfast, lunch and coffee, Santana's Restaurant, which will serve breakfast, lunch, and dinner, In Good Taste, which is a catering place, some cigar wine bar, another bakery. And one of the things that I think is important to understand is that this is a food desert, this area. There is a very substantial lack of restaurants for the county employees to, to even go patronize during, during work hours. This are, the brewery coming is focused on the left, and then we've had some outdoor events with other vendors coming to really have a street fair in the district.
Mr. Schiller, what is your ask?
So we're asking for this board's direction to have staff basically give us a lease, negotiate a lease where we can provide revenue to the county. And basically, you can see the parking spaces, both for the parking health department and for the governmental center, for lease. And again, this creates real opportunities for small businesses. I know that we've approached staff previously, staff was not in favor of doing this because of the up-in-the-air nature of what was going to happen with the South County Governmental Center.
County Administrator, could this be something that staff can review with Mr. Schiller and his, and his client to see if there's a way we can accommodate this operation with some parking?
If it's the board's direction for us to do so, yes, we will do it.
I'm looking for some board direction. Commissioner Moreno?
Neil, thank you for coming up, but, you know, we're talking about trying to repurpose this property, and anything that we would do in the way of a lease for a valet parking would be temporary. So at some point in time, if we did this, at some point in time, they're going to have to find another place to park these cars. So how would that impact this, this new dining venue if, in two years from now, we say, "I'm sorry, which you can't valet, valet park your cars here"?
Well, I think we're only, we're only looking for a limited number of spaces, 30 to 40 spaces at most, and so, at that point, if.
That's what Tri-Rail wants, 40 spaces.
Well, at that point, if, if, when, not if, but when the, the spaces are gone, we'll have to find adequate spaces, or, or things will change. But these are an opportunity for the spaces to be used now, so we can start growing this business now, and maybe it's, it's here for two years, and maybe this is part of the governmental center at some point. Who knows? But it would offer immediate opportunities for food service, again, for county employees in addition to, to visitors of the district.
Well, if, if this is something that can be done and does not impact at all what we're doing, I think maybe it might be a conversation worth having.
Thank you.
Administrator Baker?
This is, Mr. Schiller's is not representing the only groups that are coming to the county to utilize county parking. I am very cautious on taking this on an individual basis. We've got a number of, someone gets hurt in our parking lot, that's liability for the county. I am a bit concerned that really we, if it's the board's wishes, we're happy to sit down and talk to Mr. Schiller, but this is not a one-off. We've got a number of groups coming to us wanting parking in our parking garage as well as other spaces, and we have held off on that because we are growing, our needs are continuing to expand, and we need to address this issue on a overall policy basis and not on a one-off. So that is my concern with this. I am willing to make money on parking, not give it away free. However, we still need to take the overall approach of looking at it just like businesses do, to make sure that we're not putting ourselves in a situation that we will be limiting. do, to make sure that we're not putting ourselves in a situation that we will be limited when it comes to county operations.
And certainly, we understand that. We also understand that the county makes space available to community organizations to come on, use space, with the idea that, obviously, there's an indemnity agreement, and so if there is an accident or something happens while they're on our property, that we have some legal recourse.
So, if I may, Mayor, two comments that I would like to share with Mr. Schiller, reached out to us. We shared with him two things. Number one, that we had this upcoming presentation in front of the board, and we were hoping to get that direction that will let us know how to better utilize the space, and also that we needed to competitively bid that lease, you know? So, that's another component, and goes back to being able to move things forward and using our time resources in the best way possible. So, if we were to put out on the street an RFP for leasing that space, it's going to take time that we could be certainly investing elsewhere. As it relates to the community uses, we do that through license, standard license use agreements, okay? An authorized form many years ago, back in 2013, I want to say, by this board that under certain circumstances allow us to authorize community uses in county facilities, very limited circumstances, in general, where no profit is being produced, collected, thank you, is being collected, and if it is, then we get to impose on a case-by-case basis a fee associated with the use. So, in a nutshell, that's how it operates.
I would like to hope that this is not a major distraction to other things that are on your plate right now. Vice Mayor Weiss?
Certainly.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment, I mean, other communities have parking facilities that are publicly owned. I mean, the city of West Palm Beach, I park in their structures. I know some of them are shared with City Hall and their vehicles. One over by the Police Department has police parking in it, in part of it, and for police vehicles, and part of it is open to the public to utilize. And I know in the city of Lake Worth Beach, they have surface parking lots that are available for people to utilize, so I'm not sure I understand what this issue about using, making or utilizing our spaces and the liability that might be associated with that, and where that's coming from.
All right, I'm going to take Commissioner Bernard, and the Administrator wants to pipe in also, but I don't want to get distracted too much by this request. I think that the board probably is ready to just give directions to move forward with this and do it expeditiously. Commissioner Bernard?
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, I do support it, and, you know, let staff and Neil Schiller work it out, but I'm supportive of it.
Very good, thank you, and I think there's a consensus here that we'd like to see what can be done, but also to protect our own interest in this. All right, let's move back to discussion on the complex. I see we have, Christina Morrison has put a card in, and we are very happy to see you, and this time around, Vice Mayor is going to time you.
How much time do I have?
For you, three minutes.
Okay, thank you so much. County leaders, thank you so much for having this hearing. This is so vitally important to South County, and I recommend that you immediately proceed with an RFP for a PPP simultaneous with your staff's looking into what they need. If your staff doesn't know what they need, I'm not sure how to accept that, but that's another story. So, my name is Christina Morrison, I'm a commercial Realtor here in Palm Beach County. I've had a business here for 20 years, since right after 9/11, and I'm based in Delray Beach, Florida. Since 2015, we've been working on this issue of this South Congress redevelopment, and of which your campus is the main impetus for redevelopment. And you can see that your staff was on this task force since 2015, and this report was given in 2016. So, we've been working with this for seven years, seven years, and we're still talking, no action. So, we've spoken, I've spoken to you individually, I've spoken with County Administrator Verdini about affordable and workforce housing, odd noises here in Tallahassee, everywhere, and we're still fighting with this situation of what we need for affordable housing. This property is perfect for a transit-oriented development that would include workforce housing, including single, could be single-family cottages, combined with condos, combined with rental apartments, all on the same site. Offices for the county, and maybe for even some private sector, and other neighborhood commercial uses that would make it a true live-work environment. Neighborhood uses would include a coffee shop, you can get coffee waiting for the train, drop off your dry cleaning, get your nails done, neighborhood uses, not any heavy, big retail boxes, little neighborhood uses. Perfect site for this. As Neil mentioned, there's a food desert on Congress Avenue that this site could also help to solve, but a transit-oriented development would be a crowning jewel for our county, and the height, you mentioned that you could go up. The height that's already in place for this site is eight stories. We have our city planner here. It's 80 feet. You can go up, and in other cities, we've put the towers on top of the buildings. In fact, we have a property in Philadelphia where the roof makes more money than all the apartments below it, because all the towers are on the top of the roof, it's in the highest point in the city. So, there's ways to handle these issues, and it doesn't have to take another year, it doesn't have to take another six years. If we could move on this quickly, it would be very helpful.
We gave you five minutes.
Oh, well, thank you.
Apparently, the Vice Mayor did not put the little buzzer on, so...
Thank you so much, I really appreciate it, and please, let's get going. Thank you.
You'll get that right yet. Stephanie, I see you're out in the audience. We did allude to the comments of the chamber, but if you would like to add to those comments, we certainly would be happy to have you come on up and fill out a card after you're done with your comments. Please identify yourself for everybody.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Immelman, I'm the CEO of the Delray Beach Chamber, and I'm so excited to have the opportunity to give input from the private sector, to be able to work with the county and the city as well. The site, I'm not going to reiterate what you already know, we need affordable housing as soon as humanly possible. It's a perfect site because of the transportation hub as well, I like the development that's already happening there. Congress Avenue is vitally important to our community, and so we definitely, you know, would advocate for a public-private partnership because we feel like it would happen more quickly, it would be more expedient if we do something like that. So, we're all in favor of what you're saying, I was delighted to hear your comments today. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, I think the answer to this is, with all deliberate speed, we need for you to get moving on this, whatever it takes. County Administrator, I think you hear the remarks, and I think the idea of taking the Commissioners out of this equation and considering whether we maybe look for alternate locations. Commissioner Bernard mentioned, obviously, City Hall over in Delray for him. I'm sure there's a place maybe at the Civic Center for one or both of us in District Four and District Five. So, I think that there are ways to, again, thin out our needs, and if we can go up eight floors, that really takes a lot of pressure off of that real estate. And I'm hoping that you heard everything that was said today, including Commissioner McKinley, who unfortunately will not be here to see the fruition of this project, but I'd like to be. Maybe a couple of us will still be here.
Just for clarification?
Yes.
So, we're, staff is clear, we've got $9 million sitting in IST.
Six.
Six. Where'd I get nine? Did you take three? No, I'm just kidding. Six million, sitting in IST dollars.
Where'd that $3 million go?
So, we will, if the board's direction is for us to continue, to move forward, move forward with the consultant for the needs assessment, and then to also move forward with a consultant for design, we will then move forward. If that is this board's direction at this time.
That sounds like the direction, and to work with Mr. Schiller and his client with respect to the...
I will speak with Mr. Schiller and bring in the appropriate people, and then report back to this board.
He's going to, she's speaking to you, Mr. Schiller.
No, we will have a discussion, we will have a discussion with the appropriate parties.
All right. All right, well, we're going to break for lunch, but before I do that, I know that Commissioner Sacks is not returning this afternoon, so Commissioner Sacks, if you have any comments you'd like to make on behalf of your district, if you have any appointments or anything that you want to tie up at this point, you are welcome to do it.
Thank you very much, it was a good meeting, I'm sorry I can't be here for this afternoon. However, I look forward to sharing an office there at the Town Center Mall with you. I'll be at Nordstrom's, you can be...
All right, all right. I'll be in the old Sears Building. Commissioner McKinley?
I won't be returning this afternoon either, I just wanted to let the board know.
We'll miss you, too.
I don't have any comments to add.
All right, well, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I won't be returning also.
You know, one more of you doesn't return, we're going to just call the end of the meeting right now. All right, it is 12 noon, we'll be back at 2:00 PM. Thank you, everybody, we're in recess.